Twenty first, two thousand and nineteen meeting of the Whitehall City Council for the purposes of considering such matters may come before it. I ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence or remain standing for the play. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Elmore? Coniston?
Present.
Cantor?
Present.
Patrick?
Present.
Morrison? President.
Present.
Ms. President?
Yes.
I'd like to move to excuse the absent member.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez to excuse the absent members. Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I do want to say, I want to say how pleasant it was to hear everyone respond with present instead of yes.
I'd like to change mine to present, please.
It did, I think it sounds better. All right.
Stick around, I'll do that all the time.
Okay. All right. So, next on our agenda, we do have the... Pardon? Next on our agenda, we have approval of minutes for May seventh, two thousand and nineteen, Agenda and Regular Meeting.
This President would like to make a motion to approve the seventh minutes.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Cantor for approval of the May seventh minutes. Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Affirmative.
Rodriguez?
Positive.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
Could be A or Y, or A or May. All right. The minutes have been approved. It's our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you have up to three minutes. All right, we'll move on. We'll start off here. Next on our agenda, we are scheduled to listen to our Standing Committee reports, and so we shall start to do that now. And we'll begin with Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We discussed several items that will be introduced tonight, and we'll meet again next Tuesday, sometime after six thirty.
All righty. Next up, we have Community and Elder Advocacy. That's Chairperson Elmore. She's unable to attend the meeting this evening. However, that committee did meet last Tuesday. Their minutes are on file. They should also meet again next Tuesday, sometime after six thirty. That brings us to Community Standards and Enforcement. Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement, that last Tuesday, our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday, sometime after six thirty.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up, we have Economic Development. That's Chairperson Morrison. He also is unable to attend the meeting this evening. However, his committee also met last Tuesday. Their minutes are on file, and they will meet again next Tuesday, sometime after six thirty. That brings us to Infrastructure Maintenance and Services. Ms. Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday. We have one piece of legislation, or minutes number sixty-six, being introduced tonight. We will meet next Tuesdays after six thirty in the back.
All right, thank you. And next up, we have Public Safety. Ms. Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes aren't filed. We'll meet in the back on Tuesday, sometime after six thirty.
All right, thank you. Now, we have Parks and Recreation. Chairperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also met last week. Our minutes run five. We'll meet again next week in the back after six thirty.
All right. That concludes our Standing Committee reports. We'll move on to our officials' reports, and we'll begin with our Mayor, Ms. Kim Meyer.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome our audience here.
All of you.
All of you, yes. I would like to ask for favorable consideration of Orders sixty-six, sixty-seven, and sixty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have our City Attorney, Mr. Michael Bittles.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, also, I would like to thank our audience tonight. I, first of all, I'd like to apologize for missing last council meeting. Turns out, I have a son that found his knack in throwing the shot put, ended up getting third in the MSL, and then he turned around and went to districts and threw forty-six feet, eleven inches, and qualified for the regional meet this Friday. Turns out, he gets all of his strength from his mother. I have nothing to do with that. So, he is going on to regionals to throw the shot put this Friday at Pickerington High School. But, the official report from the City Attorney's Office, in the month of April, in Mayor's Court, we prosecuted two hundred and ninety-four cases. Out of those two hundred and ninety-four cases, only thirty-two of those were committed by Whitehall residents, so that was only ten percent. Also, this upcoming Thursday, we have the Legal Rams, who will be doing their final examination, right here in Mayor's Court, at six PM this Thursday. Note to self, do not do Legal Rams with a group of seniors, because having a senior, senioritis is a real thing. So, I make no, I cast no aspirations as it relates to the trial itself, but it will definitely be entertaining. So, please come out and just cheer on our Legal Rams as they conclude this, their year of mock trial, but it will be entertaining. The case itself is a case related to bullying that led to the death of a wrongful death of a student. So, I'm curious to see what they'll do myself. So, you're all welcome to come, six PM this Thursday, right here in Mayor's Court.
Six.
Six PM.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Next, we have our Director, I'm sorry, our Auditor, Mr. Dan Milton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight. I don't know what to add before you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have our Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Zach Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to give an update on our street program this year. Our contractor has wrapped up with the bulk of the work that was done, and so they are working on some punch item, our punch item list that we have created. Erickson Waterline, south of Main, we believe that we'll start the transfer from water service to the new water line this Thursday. That should take about four days, after which time, they'll start working on transferring over the six-inch main, and then start on restoration and paving to get that wrapped up here soon. Yearling Road is ahead of schedule. I think, you know, if anybody who's driven down that stretch, it's really starting to take shape there on the east side. I think it's really going to be really nice when it's all done. The storm sewer work that we've talked about at the corner of Etna and Bernhard is scheduled to occur the week after school lets out, so it didn't impact the school there, so the kids will be out before we start that. Just to recap, that is adding a new storm inlet right there at the corner to drain that corner in heavy rain, and then tie it back into the storm that's about halfway down Etna there. Our street program came in not only under bid, but under contract, and so with those additional savings, we are going to be able to pave Landby Lane this year, from Main Street to just north of Anthony Court North. That will also include a new storm inlet there at the corner of Saint Mary's and Landby to drain again another low spot where water tends to pool. So, that'll get some spot curb and gutter, but also some repaving in that stretch. It's pretty badly needed. And then, lastly, as I mentioned previously, we look to start Fairway Boulevard probably over the next month. That's using the permissive tax funds that the mayor had talked about previously, and so we'll be doing fairway from Hamilton to about the two fifty block of fairway. It's not very long, but that stretch of fairway is only permissive tax eligible between Hamilton and Country Club. For whatever reason, the stretch of fairway between Country Club all the way down to Main is not permissive tax fund eligible. So, we're doing curb and gutter as necessary there, down by Hamilton, and then paving mill and fill there from Hamilton down to, like I said, about that two fifty block. And this, again, will represent about three point eight million dollars in infrastructure improvements this year that the city will be undertaking throughout the city. So, I just wanted to give council and everyone here and at Washington home an update on what we're doing with infrastructure. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our Director of Public Safety, Mr. Van Grin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I don't have an official report, but most of them received an email, and I'd like to publicly congratulate the Whitehall Division of Fire, because we're going, tomorrow, we'll receive the two thousand and eighteen EMS Star Life Award for EMS Agency of the Year by the Ohio Department of Public Transportation. That'll be held down West Broad Street at the Ohio Department of Transportation auditorium tomorrow. And, you know, for me, I'd like to say that, watching them work, I'm, you know, really feel proud of them, and they're very humble people, and they do a great job, and they deserve the award.
All right. Thank you, sir. The following officials' reports have been filed in the council office since our last meeting. We have the mayor's...
Is that a running person?
Yes, okay.
Which one did you question?
I thought it started, the award started at one, but...
Uh, well, I was told eleven thirty.
Okay, I will find out.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So, we have received the mayor's report to council for April two thousand and nineteen, and that's the only one we've received on our community petitions and claims. We did receive the minutes for the March sixth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission, along with the agenda for the May eighth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission. At this time, it's time for a verification of copies, so I'm going to ask Ms. Ogg to please call the roll on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation we have listed on the agenda this evening prior to the meeting and including any anon legislation.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to our ordinances and resolutions for the evening. We'll start with our third readings, and we had no legislation this evening for third reading. That leads us to our second readings. Again, we had no legislation on the agenda this evening for second reading. So, we'll move on to our first reading items for the evening, and we'll begin with Ordinance sixty, two thousand and nineteen. It's making and approving an appropriation of fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, sixty-eight cents from the Recreation Bond Fund to the Park Improvements expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance sixty, two thousand and nineteen, for suspension of all rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance sixty, two thousand and nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance sixty, two thousand and nineteen.
Move to adopt?
Yes, or second.
Or present. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of Ordinance sixty, two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance sixty, two thousand and nineteen, has been adopted. We now move on to Ordinance sixty-one, two thousand and nineteen. It's transferring one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, seventy-eight cents from previously unappropriated monies in the general fund to the Tax Incentive Program Fund, making a supplemental appropriation of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, seventy-eight cents from the Tax Incentive Program Fund to the Tax Incentive Expense Account and authorizing an income tax revenue sharing payment to the affected school districts from the Tax Incentive Expense Account in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, seventy-eight cents, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance sixty-one, two thousand and nineteen. Move for suspension of all rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on the Ordinance sixty-one, two thousand and nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance sixty-one, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt?
Second. The motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance sixty-one, two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-one, two thousand and nineteen, has been adopted. Next, we have Ordinance sixty-two, two thousand and nineteen. It's authorizing the creation of the firefighter exposure to environmental elements grant fund, making a transfer in the amount of one thousand, forty-four dollars, four hundred and forty-four dollars, sixteen cents from unappropriated monies in the fire department new equipment fund to the FEEEG grant fund and making an appropriation of eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars from unappropriated monies in the FEEEG grant fund to the, where do you think it's going? The FEEEG grant expense account and declaring an emergency. I hope I got all the E's on those.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance sixty-two, two thousand and nineteen. Move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance sixty-two, two thousand and nineteen. Questions or comments? Yes, I'd only have to read that one once. Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance sixty-two, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt?
Second.
The motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Ordinance sixty-two, two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-two, two thousand and nineteen, has been adopted. Our next ordinance is sixty-three, two thousand and nineteen. It's amending the zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under one-one-two-three-point-one-zero-C-one to allow Cat and D's LLC to operate a drive-in window and drive-through facilities on the property located at thirty-six, forty-six East Main Street, property owned by Whitehall Retail Ventures LTD. That ordinance is being read by title only. It has, was referred to the Planning Commission for their May twenty-second meeting, and we will also be having a public hearing on June eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, on this ordinance. As I said, that's being read by title only. Our next ordinance, sixty-four, two thousand and nineteen. It's amending the zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, changing the zoning on property located on Robinwood Avenue, parcel number zero-nine-zero-zero-four-four-six, from office district to residential to planned apartment district property owned by Saggy Realty Incorporated. That's being read by title only. It was also heard by the, or will be heard by the Planning Commission on the second, the twenty-second of May, and we will have a public hearing on this ordinance on June eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Our next ordinance is sixty-five, two thousand and nineteen. It's amending the zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under one-one-two-three-point-one-zero-C-one to allow Robert Wyler Company to operate a drive-in window and drive-through facilities on the property located at thirty-eight, sixty-one East Broad Street, parcel number zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-eight-three-eight-four, property owned by Saggy Realty Limited. That ordinance will be heard by the Planning Commission tomorrow evening on the twenty-second, and we shall also have a public hearing on this ordinance on June eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. President, just a matter of clarification, the Planning Commission meeting is not tomorrow. The Planning Commission is June the sixth.
June the what?
Sixth.
Sixth or eighteenth. So, they keep on...
The Planning Commission.
Just on that one?
On all of them.
June the sixth.
So, the Planning Commission meets the first Thursday of the month, so they will be hearing these cases on June the sixth.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. Ordinance sixty-six, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform work in the city of Whitehall to replace signal interconnect equipment and install fiber optic connections between traffic signals and be declared an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand and nineteen, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second. The motion by Ms. Heck and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance sixty-six, two thousand and nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance sixty-six, two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. President, I move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Ms. Heck, second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of Ordinance sixty-six, two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-six, two thousand and nineteen, has been adopted. Our next ordinance is sixty-seven, two thousand and nineteen. It's providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of one million, fifty thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the costs of a court-proof final settlement of claims made by the city in the case of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, et al versus Olander, Thomas J., et al, case number two thousand and seven, EVH zero-six-zero-two-one-seven in Franklin County Municipal Court, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance sixty-seven, two thousand and nineteen. Move for the suspension of the rules, please.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cantor and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance sixty-seven, two thousand and nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston? Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance sixty-seven, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt, please.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cantor and a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Ordinance sixty-seven, two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-seven, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and nineteen, has been adopted. Our next ordinance is sixty-eight, two thousand and nineteen. It's authorizing a supplemental appropriation of one million, fifty thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the contingency expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance sixty-eight, two thousand and nineteen. Move for suspension of rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance sixty-eight, two thousand and nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance sixty-eight, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will move to adopt.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance sixty-eight, two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-eight, two thousand and nineteen, has been adopted. Next up, we have Resolution twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen. It's resolving to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen. Move for suspension of rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen.
Move to adopt?
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Resolution twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen, has been adopted. Next up, we have Resolution twenty-five, two thousand and nineteen. It's authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept a firefighter exposure to environmental elements grant through the Ohio Bureau of Workers Compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution twenty-five, two thousand and nineteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Coniston and a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution twenty-five, two thousand and nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution twenty-five, two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Coniston, second by Ms. Heck for adoption of Resolution Twenty-five, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty-five, twenty nineteen, has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have before us this evening. That brings us to our second opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you'll have up to three minutes.
Don't rush the mic. No problem.
All right, so we'll move on to community date board. Don't forget, uh, the trial, the what?
Democrams?
The Democram trial, Thursday, two, six o'clock, right here. Be here.
Whitehall Education Foundation Golf outing, I think, is scheduled for the eighth. June the eighth. I'm sorry, July the eighth.
July the eighth. Uh, John Bishop Park Party, June the second, four thirty to six thirty, followed by Music in the Park.
That's the first Music in the Park, right?